Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of June 19, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
.........................................................
All council members are here. Meeting Agenda Approval, there's one addition per the city attorney to add after visitor comment, a executive session about potential litigation matter pursuant to RCW 4230-110I. Outside of that, is there any other changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none? Oh, yeah, this is the time to do that. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to pull from the consent agenda, AB 18093, the supplemental agreement with number three with KPFF. I am employed by this company.
That's good, we'll come back to that. So it's just pulled in the agenda. Any other changes to tonight's agenda? Okay. All right, moving on to review of projected agenda, is there any changes to that? Looks good. Review of public engagement opportunities? Okay, City Hall Open House and Ice Cream Social, Wednesday, June 20, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, Rooms 107 and 108. Find out about city services, job openings, and potential projects. See staff responses to public suggestions for projects and review the staff-proposed draft 2019 through 2025 Capital Facilities Plan. Next is Council Conversations, Sunday, June 24, from 2:00 to 3:30 PM at the Bothell Library. The city is seeking applicants for the Shorelines Board. The Board advises the city council on proposed amendments to the Bothell Shoreline Management Program, which covers development next to the Snohomish River and North Creek. Visit our website for the application and more information. The deadline to apply is June 30. Next, we have a special presentation. We have Councilmember Terry Ryan. I believe I saw him with his giant check. Go ahead, come on up to the podium. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'm just down here to present a ceremonial check to the city. I want to thank Mayor Andy and Davina, both of you. I talked to both of you. Davina, I talked to you at the Transportation Policy Board. And Andy, I usually call him to say, "How can we help you out?" and whatnot. And I believe you worked with your city manager, Jennifer. She's always been very responsive whenever I called her and said, "How can we help? And what type of projects? And infrastructure projects." These are REIT dollars. It's a grant from the county for $30,000. Specifically, it's for 19th Avenue and 232nd Street, I believe. And anyway, first thing I want to tell you, so that's why I'm here, the first thing I want to tell you is thank you very much for your service to our area, to Bothell. And actually, many of you are involved in regional things as well. I know what it's like and all the time and demands that are on you and your families. And your community is blessed by your service. And I also want to tell you how much I really appreciate Bothell. My son was just ordained a priest a week ago, and he sent his first mass at our home parish, which is St. Brendan up here in Bothell. You've got a beautiful city. You guys are on the right track. You're doing great things. And I know how hard it is to balance your budgets and get things done and projects. And I'm always looking for partnership opportunities. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I don't know the timeline on this project, but I know it's this year. And so I'm here to present this check to you. And if it's possible, if we could get a photo together, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah, it's tradition at this point, right?
Is that all right?
All right.
Can we do that?
Terry, I just wanted to thank you, too. You've been an awesome ally and friend on the Snohomish County Council. I know we're in your district, but we don't get any communication from the other council members. So we just really appreciate what you do for partnering with us and working for, not just outside of Bothell and unincorporated areas, but you do work for the citizens inside the city, too. So I appreciate that. Yeah. Next on the agenda is the Council Committee Reports and the City Manager Report. Is there any Council Committee Reports? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I wanted to speak briefly. On May 31, there was a Puget Sound Regional Council Annual Assembly where the 2018-2019 Supplemental Bioneo Budget and Work Program was adopted, as well as the Regional Transportation Plan of the Transportation Policy Board, of which Terry Ryan and I are both members, the election of Dave Summers as president. And there was a panel featuring Seattle Mayor Jenny Durkin, Polsbo Mayor Becky Erickson, Everett Mayor Cassie Franklin, and Tacoma Mayor Victoria Woodards. What was notable is the fact that 54% of Puget Sound residents now have a female as a mayor. So I thought that was exciting. In addition, on June 13, there was a Sound Cities Association Public Issues, sorry, it was Snohomish County Cities Dinner, and Secretary Millar spoke regarding transportation challenges in Washington. One thing that he said that really resonated with me is that we cannot build our way out of congestion. We don't have the lanes. We don't have the money. And so he's wanting to start a conversation with communities on better ways to plan for land use in tandem with transportation infrastructure. On June 14, there was a Transportation Policy Board meeting and a discussion of the Regional Transportation Plan Implementation, Regional Transit Access, Bicycle and Pedestrian Accessibility, Ways to Improve Bicycle Access to Transit, such as bicycle storage at park-and-rides and storage on buses. We had a guest speaker come and talk to us about a new app called Access Map that shows accessibility of walking routes, such as existing sidewalks, curb cuts, and et cetera, for those with challenges. And anyone can get it. It's a free app, but what it does is it maps your route, no matter where you're walking, and it kind of gives you a heads-up if there are challenges for people that are in wheelchairs or have walking impediments. It also will give you alternative maps, routes, based on the time of day. So if you're walking by an area that's maybe a little more dodgy, or if you would be using an elevator, but that elevator would be closed. I really encourage everyone to look at that. They're also talking about expanding your preferences, so you can include having views on your walk, avoiding allergies like specific trees. And I just thought it was really, really powerful. And so that's something that I thought people should know about. There was a brief discussion about safety data, and unfortunately, we're going in the wrong direction. We are actually experiencing more accidents and deaths than previous years. And then there was a discussion about paratransit. Currently, a one-way trip for someone that requires paratransit use is $58 one-way for a one-way trip, whereas regular transit is $7 for a one-way trip. And so there's been some initiative around reducing those costs. And they've found that 70% of paratransit service could be reduced by using fixed routes and last-mile services, and that would save a lot of money. It's just getting that last-mile service, that's the real challenge. And that is my report for this week.
All right, thanks. Any other committee reports? No, no, no. There you go. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So I attended the Downtown Action Committee and our June meeting, and I think you should all know that the Mercantile Apartments will be ready to go for rental for late August and early September. There's 122 units, and Karen, I'll spell it because I don't know, X-E-N-O-S, is the manager and would be happy to give you a tour if anybody wants one. Also, there is some concern about the flowers on Main Street, so we're kind of working through how the businesses can participate. And I think that's really important, that we look at probably a business improvement district, so that we can kind of do the things that Main Street needs. When they talk about their flex space, they talk about flowers, they need to be involved as well and be partners with us. Also, I attended the Bothell Kenmore Chamber Advocacy Committee, and I thought that was very interesting, and kind of having the look at 522 and the diversions in traffic that everybody's very concerned about. And I know, Davina, I think you're working on that as well, is how this traffic is being diverted and what a problem it's causing. So I think that probably will wrap it up. There is many, oh, economic development. So they're kind of working on economic development, and that would be all of City of Bothell and how we can promote that. And so I think that it's an interesting thing to follow, and I need to follow up with the city manager on kind of our steps and our plans. So I appreciate being with all the people in Bothell and hearing their concerns.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McNeil, did you got your thing, or you want to wait till the next time?
Yeah, I will do it the next time.
Okay. He has reports, he just can't break them up. Next is the visitor comment period. So I know there's people in the audience, I just want to make sure they know that this is the opportunity to talk. So if you hear about the vegetation within city easements, agenda item, or the hotel, Bothell Hotel item, now is the time to give your public comments. So with that, let me read you out of the manual.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's also, it would be appropriate if there's anyone here to speak about the public safety levy, that this would also be the time to do that.
Right. Basically, this is the only time to give public comment during the entire meeting. But I just wanted, I knew there were some people here for those specific items. Okay, so each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And the first person is Patty Davis.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Davis, and I reside at 21802 Third Place West in Bothell, together with my husband and my teenage son. My husband and I moved to our current Bothell home in 1988. Our son, our teenage son, will be a junior next fall at Bothell High, where both his older siblings graduated in '07 and '08. Over the last 30 years of living in our home, Bothell has become the hub of our day-to-day lives. It has offered excellent emergency and police services, employment, education for our children, a boarding facility for my horses, a library, shopping, the Burke-Gilman Trail for bike riding, and local parks. But most importantly, Bothell is our hometown, where we have become involved in the school system and have strived to become citizens who support and endeavor to make Bothell a better place. I am a corporate accountant, and I had the pleasure of working in Bothell, in a Bothell-based company, for about 10 years. In September 2017, I joined 360 Hotel Group, the management company for Bothell Hotel LLC and six other hotels in the area, as a general accountant. They brought me on board as the company is growing, and they want to be able to handle the additional accounting work that will be generated by the development and management of the two hotels in Bothell. After the last nine months of working for 360 Hotel Group, I have been impressed with all the management and the employees' dedication and loyalty to the growing company. This is a company that gets things done, while at the same time, they're welcoming, friendly, with an emphasis on family. I am excited and thrilled to be part of the corporation that is instrumental in the growth of Bothell. I assure you that this company is fully committed to moving ahead with this project. They have pride of ownership and want this hotel to be a centerpiece for Bothell for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ilif Nurawi. I'm sorry if that was not pronounced correctly. Ilif?
Yeah, good evening. My name is, it's Alif Nurani, and address 10710 Northeast 10th Street, Suite 121, Lindwood, Washington 98039. I am the owner's representative of Bothell Hotel LLC. The company is owned by my wife, Shais Adamji, who oversees the company and her sister, but both of them are traveling for a family commitment and unable to be here tonight. I am here, as we just learned last night, of a revised city council meeting agenda to consider its repurchase option of the hotel site under our development agreement. We understand that the city manager is recommending that the city council exercise this option and thereby stop the hotel project despite our requests for an opportunity to discuss an amendment to the development agreement extending the deadlines. I am speaking today to express our company's continued commitment to the Bothell Marriott Spring Hill Suites and Town Place Suites project. The hotel will have 187 rooms and has been designed and will be operated with the intent of encouraging guests to dine at local restaurants, rent bicycles from Seattle Electric Bank across the street, support local businesses, and generate substantial lodging taxes. We have joined the Bothell Chamber of Commerce and plan to be active members. We will create employment, and all staff are offered medical, dental, and vision benefits, a 401K plan, as well as paid vacation, in addition to all mandated benefits. At this time, we have filed for our clearing and grading permit, which is now in its second review with the city, utilities permit, right-of-way permit. We have also filed for the shoring building permit, foundation-only building permit with concrete superstructure, and underground shoring permit. We have paid the requested fees on these permits. We intend to file within a week the remainder of the building permit. Next Tuesday, June 26, we are scheduled for a design meeting with the Landmarks Review Board, and 3D design materials will be submitted to the review board on Thursday, per our discussion with the review board consultant. In total, without accounting for four years of mine or our staff members' time, we have spent approximately $3 million on this project. We have worked closely with city staff to mitigate any environmental impacts from the former dry cleaner site on the adjacent Lot 9. Yes, there have been inevitable delays caused by a variety of factors, but we have committed time and resources, and the end result will be even better than our Bellingham Marriott Spring Hill Suites and Town Place Suites hotels, which have repeatedly won Marriott Service and Performance Awards. This is a complex project, particularly because of the adjacent environmentally sensitive site. I just read the city's briefing to the city council about the potential liability issue. It fails to mention a crucial point that the city violated. Should I continue?
If you could wrap it up, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that we are committed to this project, and there's a lot more at stake here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Amy Spain.
Good evening. I'm Amy Spain. I'm the Executive Director of the Snohomish County Tourism Bureau, and I'm here to voice support for the hotel development project that is on your agenda for discussion tonight. And I thought it would be helpful to share some information about visitor data and economic impact with you, and also some plausible impacts from another major development in the county. So the economic impact of overnight visitors staying in commercial lodging in Snohomish County is 260% more than the revenue generated from day visitors. So significant economic impact to your community. Visitor spending in Snohomish County was over $1 billion in 2017. And of that $1 billion, actually $1.1 billion, 34% of that visitor spend goes to local restaurants. Hotels are third on the list as far as the recipient of visitor dollars. So many people think about hotels being the primary recipient of that dollar. And in fact, it's spread very wide throughout your community. Retail purchases and arts and entertainment purchases account for 28% of that visitor spend, so it really is an economic driver. The visitor spend generated in Snohomish County, excuse me, the tax revenue generated from that visitor spend was over $35 million in local tax revenue. That's $35 million that stayed in the Snohomish County cities and communities. Overnight visitors obviously spend more time here, but they spend more money and generate more local revenue in direct spend to those retail establishments, restaurants, et cetera, and generate more tax revenue for your coffers. The City of Bothell is currently spending resources to develop your tourism brand, and if successful, you will identify and develop more reasons for visitors to come to your community. In order to capitalize on that and maximize that return, that economic impact from your visitors, you need places for them to stay. Now, obviously, you have hotels in your city, but only one that is part of your downtown core. Visitors seek walkable downtowns, and with a hotel project here, that will make it even more attractive to your out-of-town visitors to stay overnight. Occupancies of hotels in Snohomish County grew 6.2% in 2017 over the previous year, and with the commercial air service at Payne Field that will be starting very soon, that will definitely drive more demand. I'll close with just a personal anecdote about the 360 Hotel Company. They have proven to be very good community partners. Their leadership is involved in county-wide lodging tax and tourism promotion area boards. Their general managers volunteer their time on city lodging tax advisory boards in all of the communities in which their hotels are located. And finally, their hotel products are among the best-quality hotels within their market segments where they're located. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Dana Wurtala. See, she's way better than I am.
Hi, my name is Dana Wurtala, and I have lived and worked in Bothell for about the last 20 years. My sister Darcy Rowe, my friend Kate O'Brien-Rourke, and I all previously wrote letters showing our support for the Bothell Marriott projects. I have been very supportive of the Bothell redevelopment, especially I have been excited about the inclusion of the Marriott Hotels. When I was in college in the early '90s, I started working at what is now the Nexus Hotel in Northgate, which is also owned by the 360 Hotel Group. The owners and the staff of that hotel, as well as all of their other hotels that I have visited over the years, are very supportive of their employees and very involved in the communities in which they participate. I don't see how stopping this project would help the Bothell community. I think the opposite, that this would be an extreme benefit to the community to have a hotel. Working for AT&amp;T, which I do, which is over on North Creek Parkway, you know, we have lots of people that come in and out, and there's so many businesses over there, and they could definitely benefit from the new hotels in the area, as well as all the new restaurants. So I encourage the city council to work with the hotel owners to proceed with the development, so that we can have a really good business addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Mullins.
Hi, my name is Dave Mullins. I own and operate a real estate consulting business. 360 Hotel Group is one of my clients. By the way of background, I was a National Bank Examiner for 10 years. I spent 25 years with US Bank, managing Commercial Loan Construction Division. I'm also a publicly elected Water Board Commissioner on Whidbey Island. In all my years of banking, I have never met anyone with a higher level of integrity than the Johnji family, which is the owner of the 360 Hotel Group. They produce and manage superior products. They are a pleasure to work with, and I have represented them for over 15 years. It's difficult to understand what's happening here. This is not an abandoned project. They have been working diligently on this project since they signed the purchase-and-sale agreement. They have spent over $3 million on this project, not including the thousands of hours that they've put into this. They are just a few weeks away from signing a construction contract with the Excel Pacific and closing a loan with MCO Blank, which I arranged. I know from years in the construction development that design development of a hotel is often a long and complicated process, and this has proven to be the case. I was involved in the beginning in negotiating the purchase-and-sale agreement, but we were assured that as long as there was continued progress on this project, extension would be granted. And that's been the case. There has been progress, ongoing progress, all along. There has definitely, definitely been delays, but they have been primary out of the control of the 360 Hotel Group. The question keeps coming up. Why is the city going in this direction? For the good of the community, this project should go forward. If an extension is not granted, you're adding five to seven years before a hotel will be opened on this site. You're giving up taxes and income from the garage. That's a lot of money over five to seven years. I strongly urge that you vote no to exercise your option to repurchase this project, and you direct the city employees to enter into an extension agreement that allows this project to go forward. If this does not occur, my advice to the 360 Hotel Group would be to enter into a lawsuit against the City of Bothell. This would be expensive and time-consuming, and just frankly, makes no sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Joshua S-C-H-E-E-R. Oh, Joshua, hey. It's you. How's it going?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joshua, Chair of the law firm Perkins Coie. I'm here tonight representing Jerry and Carrie Hicks, who are before you on Agenda Bill 18094 on tonight's agenda concerning a hedge that abuts their property on 100th Avenue Northeast. I would have been a little earlier to the meeting, but unfortunately, ETP and Seashore haven't fixed our traffic woes anytime recently. So we sent in a letter to each of you that hopefully you receive today, but I have a few additional points to make concerning this agenda bill. The hedge itself that's on the neighbor's property, abutting the Hicks' driveway, straight-up violates the conditions of the utility easement. There was no permission for that hedge to be planted there. It should simply be removed as a matter of contractual law. There's no boundary dispute between the parties here either. The hedge is simply in the easement, and no permission was given for it to be there. Now, why do the Hicks care that it's in the easement? It's a safety issue. This hedge, even if trimmed back, really blocks the line of sight pulling out of their driveway. I went out there several weeks ago and personally took a look, and it might be hard to see from where I'm standing, but I took a video, and, you know, I stood here, right here at the edge of the driveway, and a few seconds, there's a car, boom, two seconds later, it comes by. Two seconds between first seeing that car and it passing by the driveway. That's how much time they have to react, even with the hedge trimmed back. I've seen it myself. The hedge should either be... The hedge should either be pushed back to the boundary line outside of the easement, it should be trimmed back further, but they have no assurance that it will be maintained that way, or frankly, my clients are willing to just pay for it to be removed. They're willing to spend that money, not on legal fees and having me come speak to you, but just to have the thing removed so that it's safer when they pull out of their driveway. Oncoming bicyclists, oncoming motorists will be able to see them, they'll be able to see those individuals. You know, when I was pulling out of their driveway, leaving their residence, I was looking at my left to make sure there wasn't a car coming. I didn't even notice the young man that was walking to my right until I happened to turn my head and saw him trying to cross on the sidewalk. It's a good thing that I looked to my right. It's a very dangerous situation there at the Hicks's driveway. And we would ask you, there are multiple options to consider, but either have the neighbor, Ms. Jamison, move the hedge back to outside the easement, have it trimmed back at least 50%, but again, there's no assurance that she'll maintain it, and then the city could continue to be involved as the years go by, or just order its removal, and my clients will pay for it. There are options here other than just leaving it the way that it is and creating the safety hazard that's a real and present danger right now at the Hicks's driveway. So the city is required, under Municipal Code 824, to enforce vegetation that's a nuisance and a safety hazard, and that's what we have here. So thank you very much for your time on this tonight.
Thank you. Next is Christine Lord.
My name's Christine Lord, and I'm here representing Serge Jamison in regards to the hedge issue. That was just discussed. I see it was really shortly described on the agenda, so I've kind of put together like a bullet point list along with some exhibits that are important to this decision you're going to be making. The first and I guess the most important thing that was just discovered yesterday from a public records request was that there is actually written permission for the hedge. When the easement was granted in 1988, when the city purchased the easement from the previous owner of both properties, if you look at the very last page of Tab 1, the city actually paid Mr. Mosley, the previous owner, $1,080 plus another $5,400 for fence, shrubs, landscape trees. So basically, when the city bought the right to the easement, they've approved in their real property voucher the purchase and installation of all of the hedges and fences that have been on that property. In regards to blocking the easement, I would like to point out that I understand that the Hicks have put their driveway over into the easement, so they have paved over the easement. And so if the hedges are in violation, then every other person who has something in the easement area is in violation. And what is being asked today is that the city selectively enforce a clear easement because the only property right now being requested is my client's property. My client just learned about these issues back in December 2017 when we see the code compliance, and with that code compliance, the issue was the line of sight. Since then, my client has trimmed back the shrubs, and it's actually, and you'll see there's an opinion from a surveyor who came out and basically said that the property is now in full compliance with line of sight from the Bothell municipal code. So again, now that it's all been trimmed, and a quick summary of this is basically, we are respecting, respectfully ask that the council drop this matter entirely. If not, we are requesting that it goes and approves the parties to enter into an agreement with Ms. Jamison for having the hedges there. And essentially, the hedges meet the line of sight requirements by the building codes. And there's been no other, it's just selective enforcement, and our client should be able to keep her hedges, and there's no violation of the codes at this point. Those have all been cleared. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings me to the end of the sign-up sheets. Is there anybody else that would like to give a public comment? Mr. Paylor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dick Paylor, 9013 Northeast 190th Street here in Bothell. I'm here to speak about the hotel matter, and just, I just found out about this today at a meeting at noon that this was going to be discussed. And I went on the website, maybe you already know this, I went on the website at 3:00, and there was nothing about this issue. I didn't get the agenda bill till I picked it up outside coming in the door. And I don't claim to know all the facts by any means, because I haven't even had time to read this. But it's hard for me to imagine why you would ever consider canceling this agreement at this point. The developer is moving forward with the city. The city bears some responsibility, I'm sure, in some of these delays, just knowing about the contamination, knowing the challenges that the city has had, cleaning up contaminated And again, it, I hate to even say this, but to see that the staff is recommending you consider giving the notice to terminate this, it feels like bad faith, to be perfectly honest with you. And so I think it would be an extremely regrettable decision if you were to do that, act on that suggestion. And I encourage you very strongly to just work out a very normal, typical extension of this and allow them to just complete the process. And I think if, and again, I'm very confident that there's some shared responsibility to get to this point. And the fact that they signed the purchase agreement, if I read this correctly, about a year ago, they've already closed on the property, that is, I don't think any other buyer here of the city surplus properties closed on the property before they had their permit. I think that was, that was the norm. So the fact that they've already done that is exceptional in and of itself. So I believe strongly that they deserve the benefit of the doubt, and I think the project is going to be great for the city. So quite frankly, like another speaker said, I can't imagine how the community could be better off if you try, you know, start a fight here. I just don't see how that would be good for the city. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide comment? One, it's gone twice, okay. We are going to go into executive session. Do I need to say the pursuant again? Yeah, RCW 4230-110I for potential litigation matters. We will be in executive session for 45 minutes, which puts us at, let's call it 7:30.